...to the flag of the United States of America, as we the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tristan Tremblay, trustee Bezonda, trustee Tremblay, trustee Garrett, here.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here. Motion to approve the minutes for the last meeting?
The vote?
The second. Any discussion on the minutes, any additions, deletions, adjustments? Take it all in? All those in favor approving minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, notices, general question period for members of the community. Do you have your report for Mr. Pinter, for his enforcement?
It's been a relatively quiet month, so just dealing with day-to-day things, permits, few complaints here and there, zoning issues, that's about it.
You got any response from the gentleman?
Oh, yes, one on Church Street did answer his thing, so the next procedure would be now we get the engineer, because he hasn't, he's signed for the certified mail, but he hasn't contacted us for what his intentions are. So we have the right, according to the village code, to go ahead and hire an engineer to look at it from the outside and make some sort of determination as to what the process would be after that. So if that's the board's wish, we have to contact Doug Ferris, I guess he normally uses here.
Your business, if you want a motion or vote, I don't know. The motion to have to hire an engineer to look at?
It's 97 Church Street.
97 Church Street.
It's 93.
93 Church Street, thank you. Examine 93 Church Street, has students' safety issues? Do I have a second? Any discussion on that?
Do you charge that?
Yes, that's, his name is David on the taxes.
Yeah, a thing like that is, yes, there was one.
Any other discussion on that? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any votes? Motion carries. Call us, you're first.
Okay, I'll call Mr. Ferris this week, he has an appointment, and I'll send the owner a letter through first-class mail what we're going to do, because obviously he does get mail, so if he wants to respond in that timeframe, then we'll put it in there, but if he doesn't, which is my guess, it must not happen, then we have to wait for Doug Ferris' recognition.
Seems like it's a, it's a wish for him.
Oh, yeah, it's not right now, this coming spring, after the ground freezes and thaws, that's the one side is in danger.
I took a look around, there's a lot of bricks that are falling.
And the roof tiles are coming off.
Yeah, it's a nice driveway.
Yeah, something has to be done.
Can I ask you a quick question? What's the status on Delafrenes property?
He was going to rebuild at one point in time, but other than that, as long as it's boarded up and shut, there's really not a lot I can do.
Well, I was curious, I actually had a home over on Cedar Street, folks have been asked, so I want to find out.
Did they buy it, or?
No, they're curious if it's going to be fixed or not.
I mean, I don't know what Mr. Delafrenes is going to do, but I've got a copy of a set of plans, some set of plans here to rebuild, but I don't see that project happening on that small a lot.
You have an email address for the gentleman?
I will send it.
We can send him an email and ask what is that going to do?
Yeah, people are, so they're cleaned up, they're fixed up.
I talked to one of them one day. He's Australian.
But as far as the status of the property as it sits, he's not in.
As long as the grass is mowed and the doors and the windows are boarded up, I mean, if you want to really get into the building code and property maintenance code, you can probably make a case to have him paint it, but I mean, you're going to spend a lot of money to get that done.
Isn't the maintenance store getting care of that property?
He has somebody that takes care of it, I know that. The grass is always cut around there, and if we get junk, it's just the places, the way that it's bad, it's just fire.
I think it's Mark's garden.
Yes.
That also.
She's got an email from him, telling him requiring money, wanting to.
Yeah, you know, basically residents are.
Well.
I don't know why it's still stagnant like it is.
That's it, unless there were any questions. Any other questions? Okay, I'll do my report. Before I do my report, I've got something that we don't get to do very often, and it's a, I think a special occasion that we do this. It's something to honor the person who's been here a long time, and to celebrate this 25th year as a village employee, and as mayor. Great, glad, I'm very happy to present Mr. Sorrell with the Black and New York Conference of Mayors, municipal officials, presents this 25-year certificate of public service to Larry Sorrell. In recognition, 25 years of distinguished public service in our community, the New York State Conference of Mayors is pleased to honor, to publicly acknowledge your dedication and commitment to the community.
Plans for the Village Fest on August 20th are moving forward. Today will be held in conjunction with the townwide garage sale and an open house at the Champlain Telephone Company, which will have their open house and demonstrations from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Our day, the villagers' day, will begin at 9:00 a.m. with a 5K race through selected village streets. Interested runners may still pre-register for the race by contacting Connor McPetrich at 298-5548. At 11:30, there will be a rededication ceremony at the Poccat River Park on Main Street. The park is currently being upgraded with the addition of new tables and benches, with a barbecue grill that will be installed for public enjoyment. I would like to publicly thank Mr. Philip Payet for allowing the village to move a stone and plaque from his property on the corner of Church and Main to the park. This monument to the village was dedicated in 1938 with a time capsule inserted under the plaque to be opened in 2038, at the 100th anniversary. The time capsule was recovered and will be protected in the village safe, unopened, as the village forefathers wished until 2038. I would like to thank Larry and his Department of Public Works crew for the cleaning of the two plaques in the park and preparing the area for the formal rededication event that will be at 11:30. The events at the River Street Park will begin at noon and go on until 4:00 p.m. There will be a free ice cream social, games and face painting for the kids, and a variety of exhibits for everyone. The Clinton County Sheriff's Department will be here with its Safe Child ID program. The Border Patrol will be here with a couple demonstrations for us. Champlain EMS will do a blood pressure program. Champlain Fire Department will have some equipment on hand, and the Samuel D. Champlain Museum, thanks to Mrs. Poccat, will be open for the public to view historical exhibits that shows Champlain's history. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate, and a fun-filled day will be enjoyed by all those who attend the many events scheduled. It will be good to see the village downtown filled with lots of people enjoying the day. The Successful Community Garden is providing fresh vegetables to those residents participating, as well as the Champlain Outreach Center. It is amazing how much better vegetables taste when out of the garden, and how great it is to see village residents working together for the common goal of providing fresh, healthy food for the community. It's been, I think, a very worthwhile effort down by the river. Hopefully, next year, we can make it a little bigger and get more people involved and keep the, keep the community aspect going here, as I think we should and will benefit the village.
Any questions? Do you have any on my report?
I really don't have much. I missed last month's zoning board meeting, but there is one this Wednesday night for a new experience. Other than that.
Great report. Also, follow-up, the last month, Mayor Martin and myself attended the Champlain Fire Department and just to follow-up progress of where they stand with the backwater preventer on their water service. It appears at this time, they're going forward with an engineering study done for health department approval. Upon that point, they'll look at the most economical, legal way to have the equipment installed. That way, they're looking to project and foresee a budget for next year's, based on the cost associated with the building. Which is good, it's progress. We, no, the current striking that was done on Upstreet, which is pretty sharp.
Yes, it is.
It's still, there's still law enforcement, obviously, having, it's still kind of a racetrack, but hopefully, the deterrent will be there as they have been pretty regularly.
That's more, that's all I have for this month.
Thanks, Matt.
Thomas?
They really haven't made the report, but congratulations, Larry. Mayor Martin, so that's all I have for this month.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes, of course, I really want to thank Greg Martin, he's put in a ton of work for this community event coming up. There's a lot of coordination involved, and a lot of people don't realize how much time it takes to put things together, and, you know, I greatly appreciate that, I know the community well when they see it. We are still looking for some more volunteers to help that day, we'll need about 20 to 25 volunteers to help out with a variety of things, whether it's dishing up the ice cream, coordinating with one of the games that we'll have there, directing traffic, there's going to be, you know, several things available for people to do, so anybody interested in coming for the day and wanting to do something will be more than happy to have you help us out. Also, thanks to Janet McPetrich, who's coordinating the 5K run. It, again, it's nice to have these things that pull our community together, we don't do a lot of things up in this area, so it'd be kind of nice to have that, and Doug Willie will have a nice day, we've had enough nice days, but we'll try, hopefully, it'll continue to be nice. So, again, that's on the 20th, so mark your calendars, not only for great garage sale deals, but lots of fun events to pull everybody together, it'll be nice. Then on the 25th, another community event, I mentioned last month, at St. Mary's on the grounds, Dunkin' Donuts, Papa John's owner is bringing in a 30-foot screen movie, screen, sorry, to have like a drive-in. So we'll have a big movie free to the public to come, that'll start at about 8:15, 8:30, soon as dusk hits, the movie will be up. But at 6:30, the grounds will be open to the public, we'll have food, games, face painting, jumpy house, lots of just another fun evening, just to pull the community together. That is going to be a kickoff event, at St. Mary's is going to start doing community events monthly, just to bring everybody together, pass a dish, play games, nothing as fundraiser, just, you know, because we fundraise our community to death, and kind of want to just pay back and do some fun things for the kids, and our community especially to have something to do. So we're going to try and start doing that, which will be cool. The movie that's going to be playing is Rango, it looks really cute, so, and it's fairly new movie, so it'll be kind of nice to have there. And that's all I have this month, so I'm just getting back from a nice tooth vacation. So, thank you.
Amy, let me ask, will this be outside?
Yes, outside. If it rains, it'll get pulled into the gymnasium.
Okay, so if it's outside, should folks bring a chair?
Yes, yes, thank you. Bring lawn chairs, there'll be posters up all over town by the end of the week, but yeah, bring a lawn chair or blanket, pillow, whatever you want.
Cars lined up with speakers?
Yeah, no, no speakers, they're going to have a sound system that's going to project out onto the field, so you'll park in the parking lot at school or down in the church parking lot, and you'll, you'll sit in the field, so.
That's good.
It'll be fun. And this is all donated by Papa John's, Dunkin' Donuts owner, very nice.
Have a report from the board, please.
I wouldn't have to expense a new report for July.
Any questions, members?
I have one question. John? I'm assuming the property maintenance that you spent the 1575 on?
Just mollywares and mortgage.
Oh, okay, we're going to reimburse for that?
Yes.
Okay. That's all.
Any other questions? Motion to approve what?
We have additional invoices. Everyone had a separate piece, sheet paper that lists their, in addition, of $7,289.46.
And that includes?
No, we have, yes, it's a library donation, the thinning of the office, Jimmy went to water class, our electricity bills, our auditor.
Can you go?
Pardon?
Can you go, you go for two questions?
Yes, that's equivalent there to $2,000 of.
Okay, make a motion to accept this with the additions of $7,289.46?
One second. Second. Any other discussion? Anything else on the way? There it goes.
Any questions?
Questions?
Trustee Tremblay?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett, uh, trustee Bezonda?
Aye.
Trustee Tremblay?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett, hi.
Mayor Martin?
Aye.
Questions? Work from the supercomputer?
We've all had a copy of our, my report. Right now, we're getting, we're just cleaning up, we're checking the passing codes, getting long-term window.
Doing a good job doing that part, I think, replacing that, moving that stone into the park, getting that set up, and again, reiterate, and congratulate you and the crew for the work that you've done on those plaques. It's stuck, we changed that. Guys have done a good job.
I got something in front of me to check into on the Queen Street, let's do Jeff Moore's house, and I think it was there, but apparently, the storm drains, oh, it's.
Is it in the corner?
I guess so, yeah. Yeah. Is it in the?
Yeah, that's a little forward, it's been blocked.
I guess it's, you know, listen, the storm drain is coming down in St. Mary's, instead of creating a storm drain.
Probably something used.
Probably something used, and something about the sidewalk, a breakage in the sidewalk, that's probably what it should be for itself.
Two buses to do that, so.
I wanted to do a look at that, and then do a thing or something, and then make it over there.
Yeah. Anything else, Mike? One of the things I'm having a look at is, is looking into replacing the, the compressors down in the wastewater, using a, over there.
In 96?
We're using an upper level electrician, we can, we can get some true management, they have, they do a lot of energy efficient, which will take themselves, and I think for sure, pretty fine. They would be, they're not, looking for, you know, some other financial items to, to address that, because large processes, and I think that would be short for the time. There's all the downers, there's all the air compressors, keeping that time going.
Well, there's that grant money, it was in the paper, one of the Mondays, I don't know, I'm still reading too easy with the papers, but, but especially our county was targeted for some of this money, which could go towards, you know, wastewater, water. I, no, it was a Monday, so it was either this past Monday or the Monday before that.
The nicer that we're talking about?
Yes.
Could you tell us about that, please? The nicer, kind of things regarding the address?
Um, nicer is actually doing an energy audit for the grant, for the big grant that we have now.
Yeah, no, it's not that.
No, but nicer is doing a study on the waste, how to do the plant now, which will be completed by the end of this month.
Oh, okay, great.
So hopefully, we'll get some kind of feedback of what we changed, or what we should be changing, changing out to run more efficiently.
We'll have it by the end of the month?
Yes.
Because the grant, I think, is the 4th, it was 7th of September, for the deadline. A good avenue for us.
Yeah, we have to.
All right, yes.
I don't have it, it's not.
And especially if it's the security service, they're the ones that are doing it.
Yeah, I'm thinking that's what it was. Just another avenue for us.
Jane? Do the correspondence, please.
We have correspondence from CompuTel Consultants, we are in utility overcharges.
Under role business, the GSA meter, nothing has changed there?
Not at this time.
Under new business, I'd like to go back to CompuTel Consultants, we've all had a copy of this, I hope you've had a chance to review it. This is an NACOM recommended program, and we give this company, CompuTel Consultants, permission to examine our electric bills and our cable bills, and to go through them bit by bit by bit, so we speak to like an audit, and come up with ways that we can save some money in that area. Now, the only charge here is, and why do you correct me if I'm wrong, the only charge here is the money that they are able to save us when we implement these savings, they get a 45%.
And it's a one-time charge?
One-time, 45% of the savings charge. And then, we'll realize the savings thereafter, but this is a firm that does this, they go into, into the past electric bills, past cable bills, and look at those services that are being provided, and as a way to snuff out savings for us, for the village. I think that we, it looks like a win-win situation, I just would like the board's approval to proceed with this, to proceed with this adventure. Do you require a motion? Yes.
I made a motion, proceed with looking at our energy cost saving, trying to save money, it's astronomical, actually.
Special request. Yeah. Second. Any other discussion, members?
Yeah, I have a question, great, the question I have is, do we, you probably have a contact at that place, you probably, do we know, is the 45% collected based off the projected cost saving, or is this?
No, if we, if we give a refund, they will get 45% of that. If we don't get refunds, then they don't get anything.
So it's following the refund, they, they get paid, okay.
So they're pretty confident, probably, that they can save us some money sometime.
There's some overcharges off time.
They also would have free book.
I noticed that.
Phone, electricity, cable, all of this.
Do they also, do they also look at, I know, I know that our accounts are some of nice types of, of association, but then look at street money as well, and doing the best they can for luck, or, I mean, Steve.
You know, that cable franchise contract was rather time-consuming, and the whole thing with the, with the remuneration from them, was you could, you could get back up to 5%, I believe, and ultimately, the motion, that we would stay with what was there before, at 3%, because we withhold by the Public Service Commission that if we went to 5%, that would just pass on to the consumer. So we kept it at a lower rate, the remuneration of the village at a lower rate, because of cable costs, and we withhold for, you know, for the consumer. Was the end of the, the end of the cable company. I think this is a win-win situation here. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Questions, Marys? Thank you. Uh, the second, second, under new business, I would like the board's approval, I would like the board's approval to pay for the purchase of a bench table, and a big grill for Poccat Park.
Is that the whole of your name, Sam?
Yeah, yeah, it's right here. Larry did some wheeling and dealing for us, saved the, saved the shipping fee, that was a couple hundred dollars. When we were moving the stone from one area to the, to the park, there was a cement table and benches down there, the benches were broken, the table was not attached, it was in very poor shape, so I had Larry take that and put it in the hole that was, that was where the plaque was. I'd like to put, I'd like to put the table and benches there to upgrade the park a little bit, make it look a little better. You got the, you got the grill essentially for free, lots of hundred and seventy, you got two hundred dollars off the shipping cost, and I wanted to, really, put that in there, you know, to encourage more people down in the downtown area, down in the park area. Larry's going to work on upgrading the light system down there, I'd like to see the flag putting down here, you know, as well as maintaining the properties. The second, the first one on here, contour bench, that is to replace the stone on Mr. Payet's property. One of the things that the family requested was that if we moved the stone, that we would put a bench down there for people to sit on and enjoy the, you know, the area that looks down on the street, down the river, and that could be, could be appropriate, and , you know, we put a bench actually, as a, I guess, as a, as a way of thanking that family for. And, you know, we put a bench, I guess, as a, as a way of thanking the family for giving us the opportunity to move that stone and plaque down into the village park area. So, I guess I'm looking for a motion to, uh, expand the area fifty-five dollars to seventy cents for that.
More promotion?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion members?
Uh, what account are we taking out, are we taking out of Parks Recreation? Okay, um, and you have another quote, we have the two quotes on this.
It's, uh, U.S. contractors.
Do you have a tip, too?
No.
Have we done anything, uh, to report that family?
We, uh, quite a number of people, volunteers, people who participate, and do something on the individual, and something on the bigger. Any discussion? Any other, sir? You will call me, please.
Trustee Trombley. Trustee Prusanda.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Moore, I'm here, Mayor Martin, I know I was going to do that.
Aye.
Question, please. Any other new business for the board?
Make motion to adjourn?
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I've been just waiting for myself to say that.
If you haven't seen the, uh, if you haven't seen the flyers that are going out, the telephone companies mailing over three thousand to their customers and, uh, you know, throughout the phone companies area, there's one up on the bulletin board, a colored, uh, one there. I have some here, there's three different versions of it, uh, it's interesting, it's, uh, the only thing I noticed is I think at the time, well, for us, but that's okay. Okay?
Yeah, I know what you're saying, too.
Thank you all.